Yeah, for sure. So basically, it'll be a quick 30-minute forum. We've got some questions that we've prepared, but we're also going to encourage people tuning in to use the Q and A function on here to submit their own questions as well. And so we'll likely pull a couple from those. We also have a rapid-fire round where we will just ask you yes-or-no questions. So you'll only answer with yes or no. I know that can be tough. And then we're going to actually give you guys, since there's two of you, we're going to give you a minute 30 or 90 seconds for each question. The previous forums, we've done a minute for response, but we'll give you guys a little bit of extra time. And then you will have closing statements at the end.
How long will the closing statement be? Like, is it a minute?
Also 90 seconds. Sorry.
It's 90 seconds? Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, you know what? I am showing up as Mary Shin. I don't, I don't think people will be confused. But I think we better get started because I do think we have some members of the public that are logged on, so go ahead.
All right. I think we've kind of given a bit of a rundown, but if we're just now joining on, I'm not sure if we've been here this whole time or not. But welcome, everyone, to a series of forums between KOAA and The Gazette. We've been doing these all week long, talking to different city council candidates. And today, we are doing City Council District Four. We'll be asking a series of questions, some of them pre-prepared. Some of them, we do want to encourage all of you to join in on the conversation as well. We have the Q and A function, and you can submit questions that way. Or if you're watching this on Facebook, we'll also do our best to monitor that page as well and pull some questions, so you can have those answered. Candidates will have about a minute and a half to respond to each question. And when we reach the minute 30 mark, there will be a bell sounding so that the candidates know that the time is up. But I'll go ahead and send things over to Mary.
Yeah, it's wonderful to have you both with us. This is the District Four race. These ladies are competing to represent Southeast Colorado Springs. And we have with us today Yolanda Avila. She is the current city councilwoman and her challenger Regina English, who is a business owner and a nonprofit founder. And we're going to jump into our first question. Can you both tell us what you think is the biggest challenge facing the city right now? And we will start with Regina.
I think the biggest challenge, wait, are we speaking for our district or you're saying city as a whole?
City as a whole.
Okay, so while I would say for the city as a whole, if there's an issue in a district, then that makes it an issue for the city as a whole. So I know we are facing an affordable housing crisis because there is a lack of. And I know there are some other issues that we want to focus on, like police accountability is very important to me. So that's a major issue that I believe should be facing the city because that's important to many constituents as well. There are different things that we need to focus on that is of significance, important in the time that we're in. And I know that utilities, we're facing some issues with utilities, with diversifying our, the way we use energy and making sure that we do not have a lack of water and making sure that the growth we're experiencing, because we're certainly experiencing some growth, making sure that we, we're growing responsibly and making, making good decisions. Like, and I can go to that in terms of affordable housing. We need to make sure that zoning is more flexible. We know that density can keep the costs down. So just focusing and zooming in on these different things. The homeless, we have issues with that. However, we do have more shelter beds that have been established. But I think we can be doing more as a city. And we're, we're in a pandemic. The economy has suffered. Many businesses has closed. And I believe that the city can be doing more to empower small businesses so that they can keep their doors open, so that they can keep their employees paid, so that they can continue to feed and take care of their families. So it's a list of issues that are going on that the city should be zooming in on.
Broad. But thank you, Regina. We're going to go over to Yolanda now.
Thank you so much for the question. Thank you, KOAA and The Gazette Telegraph for sponsoring this. I think the biggest issue, and it's what we faced for, faced for the last whole year, is COVID-19. And coming out of the pandemic, and where do we go from here? We have business, small businesses that were scathed. We have communities that were rocked, that we had our moms and dads homeschooling. We were so affected in every area. And it's how we come out of the pandemic and how we proceed. And it's so important that we continue giving to our small businesses, making sure that our kids are taken care of and making sure that we still move forward and create that access. Right now, bus transportation is at 50% because of the guidelines, of the distancing guidelines. And so there's distancing guidelines everywhere. So we want to make sure that we're very responsible and careful as we go through this recovery, that we get as many people vaccinated to make sure that we, we don't go back and we don't have people going to hospitals and losing their lives anymore. And so as we, as we go forward, it's so important to be responsible, keep the social distancing, and, and make sure that we never go back there and opening up our schools, our businesses, our city, and be able to go on with the economic recovery as we had in the past.
Right on time. All right. Thank you both. And certainly, both of you have outlined public transportation as a priority. What would you change about public transportation on City Council? And Yolanda, we will start with you for this one. And you are on mute.
We have been on a track for transportation, right? As I said, before I was on council, you know, I was attending council meetings for three years before, just to make sure what was going on in my city. And that with that, it was increasing transportation. And so with that, we've increased more fixed routes. And we have frequency on five bus routes right now. And so what we need to do is make sure that that connectivity continues and that right now, we're going to have a route from the airport. Finally, for the first time, and that starts in July, and we have routes to the hospital. So we need to open up there and make sure that we are able to be at capacity 100%. More frequency, they talk about, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? If there's more frequency, more people will use transportation. It's harder to use tran, uh, public transportation when they're only passing, you know, once an hour. So when they're more frequent, people are more likely to use transit. And I have to encourage it, that our city is so autocentric. We have to consider all modes of transportation, whether it's walkable sidewalks, bikes, scooters, and to the like, to get, to get around. But this will enhance, it's always that first mile and last mile in bus transportation. So we have to make that, continue to work on accessibility, to continue to grow fixed routes and make sure that the buses are able to go to buff a little further out and make sure that new developments have parts are designated areas for buses, for buses that may not be going there yet, but to make sure that they are designated to have when they're ready to start and there's density, that buses are able to go there.
All right, Regina.
So I'll respond to that question. And just to clear it up, I did not make public transportation one of my priorities because it is not. I believe we have more pressing issues within our district than public transportation, although I do do believe that those that need access to public transportation, it need, they need to be able to have access to that. So I'm not against it. It's just not a priority of mine because we're facing more important issues in District Four. Like I said, affordable housing, police accountability, empowering small businesses to be able to recover after this pandemic. We have lots of underutilized buildings and spaces that can be used and incentivized to provide opportunities and resources for people that are actually in our district. So that's not a focal point for me. I know that it's necessary because that's a citywide issue. So it will get dealt with. But me listening to my constituents, that is not one of their main gripes or concerns. It may sound good on a campaign, but I'm really zoomed in and dialed into my community. And those are the main two issues that I've been spoke, the main three issues I've been spoken to about, which is affordable housing, police accountability, and empowering small businesses, and using the underlized, underutilized spaces that we have within our district. So those are things that I will tackle once I'm on City Council. Thank you.
Thank you both. We're going to go on to the next question. How would you like to see policing in Colorado Springs reformed? And I apologize. We will start with Regina this time.
Well, like I said the other day, I've experienced the difference between two systems and, and knowing how it feels to, you know, have a gun to your head and having to fight for your life to get out of the system and raise money that you don't have. And I believe that police do need to be held accountable for ill policing and the things that they are doing that are not ethical. So I would like to see Colorado Springs have an oversight committee and not just a LITAC community to perhaps sit around and listen to discussions and make recommendations that fall on deaf ears because the police are involved, which means to me and a lot of other constituents that they are policing themselves. I know that we have to start somewhere because that's where we are right now. However, I will push and advocate until we get an oversight committee because that's what the community wants and that's what the community needs. So police accountability is very, very important to me because I've been in a system. I know how it feels. So I can identify with my constituents because I'm not here portraying as if I am a perfect person and that I have all the answers. But what I am is a good listener, and I can respond to my constituents in the way that they want to be responded to, which is to have an oversight committee. So thank you for the question.
Yeah, thank you. Yolanda, we'll go on to you.
Yes, there definitely needs to be an overhaul with police and community relationships. Right now, the way that the policies are worded, it, right now, it allows for what happened to Devon Bailey, except for what the state stopped the Fleeing Felon Act. So it's, we have a long ways to go. And right now, we're really taking a look at what that, what, what it is and what it's entailed. We obviously need a, a different statutes or policies in place to not, to not only support the community, but support the police and making sure that they know exactly what they can or can't do or know that even though they're allowed to do it, do they have to do it? So the community needs answers. The community needs to be listened to, which frankly, it hasn't been, especially communities impacted by police violence and brutality. So I, I am hopeful with the LITAC Commission. We've had people on our town halls, I'm a liaison for that, talk and really speak truth to power. And LITAC, the commissioners on that panel are asking some really tough questions. And they may indeed make a recommendation, after all this is said and done, for police oversight. Initially, I thought this was window dressing. And what I'm, I'm giving it, giving them the benefit of the doubt of what I've heard and listened to. I see that the commission really is committed to improving relationships within the police and, and the community. And I, I think it's more important for, I don't know if Regina's ever talked to LITAC, but they are listening. They give three minutes for town halls and second meetings of their, of the month. And they're, they're taking in all this information and then turning it around and asking the police department, so what's going on with this? So I'm, I'm, I'm looking, I'm cautiously optimistic that we can make something happen here in Colorado Springs with CSBD and our community.
I have spoken with people on LITAC, on the LITAC Committee, just to respond to that. I have. Thank you.
All right. And this next round, we're going to do rapid fire. So it'll be a few questions, just yes-or-no responses. And for these, we will start with Yolanda. So just alternate between the two of yes, no on all of these. So our first question, do you support recreational marijuana sales?
Yes. Yes.
Should the city consider a minimum wage increase to keep up with the cost of living?
Yes. Yes.
And finally, is the city's investment in parks and open space adequate?
No. Definitely not. No.
Great. We're going to go on to some questions that will be candidate-specific or based on the things that you've said. And in Yolanda's case, some of the things that she's backed. So we will start with Regina, Regina rather. You know, you've talked about improving the need to improve mental health care in town, and that's not really something the city is involved in. So how would you get the city involved in improving mental health care? What role could the city play?
I, I believe that the, I, I understand that's not a city issue. However, I believe as a city, we are a community, so we're in this work together. It's a collaborative work. And I believe that the city could do a better job at being more intentional on reaching out and connecting and collaborating with different organizations and individuals that actually do this work because mental health plays a very important role in many of the issues that we're seeing right now, predominantly homelessness. And I know within the Plan COS, there are some things, some different response teams that have been put together to go on these causes. But the thing is, we can always be doing more. There's something more that the city can do. And I believe that something more is to actually connect more with, like I said, different organizations and individuals that are actually in this work. And then in fact, be more intentional on how they engage the community to see what the community wants and need and what does mental health look like for the community versus the city, you know, having that whole relationship. Because I, I don't have all the answers. Clearly, I don't. Or, you know, we wouldn't be having this conversation if everything was an easy fix. But I do believe that the city can be more intentional on engaging in this process, especially tapping into the mental health community to make sure that everything is all-encompassing. So when the decisions are being made, every perspective is at the table. Thank you for the question.
Yeah, thank you. And Yolanda, last year, you backed a plastic bag fee that would have helped fund city cleanups. And it was, it was pretty controversial. And I was hoping that you could address if you might go forward with something like that or how you would focus on your, your city cleanup priorities if you're reelected.
That's a great question, Mary. So the, I was getting so many emails about the trash throughout the whole city, in particular, in my district. It seems to settle there. And also, I'm very concerned about our environment. And so I did pro, put a proposal to have a blast, plastic beef bag fee. That's a tongue twister. And to, to, for two reasons. One, to clean up our city, and two, for the environment. There were plastic bags all over, and that wasn't the only trash. It was just trash everywhere, and there continues to be. And I thought, well, there's a solution. Let's clean up the city and save our environment. And the, the bags were 10 cents. But this was the thing, is that we were going to have reusable bags. Reusable bags, and most of them were going to be given out free. We're going to be at libraries, and so that people can reuse the bags and to save the environment. When, when there's pollution, air, water, our, our community in District Four is impacted 10 times as much. It's like if there's a cold in the north side of town, well, in the southeast side of town, we get the full-on flu, or should I say COVID-19, which is true. And so I wanted to, to make sure that we could figure it out. As a result, we had a work session on that. And I, I brought it up to the administration. It's like, okay, so that didn't happen. How are we going to clean up this entire city? What are we doing? And now each department in the city has a role to play in this cleanup effort. I'd like to see it become a clearinghouse to make sure that we can send out crews daily to, to clean up the city and clean up camps and clean up everything we're able to have. It looks like the state legislature, though, will being, is bringing back a ban on plastics, and that'll be all plastic. So we were going that way in that direction anyway. I just wanted a way to capture some of that revenue to clean up our city. So I will continue to work on finding a solution to make sure that our city is clean.
All right, Yolanda, thank you. All right. Next question, we'd like to talk to you guys a little bit about how you would address the need for affordable housing. And Yolanda, we will start with you for this one.
Okay, so there is no silver bullet for affordable housing. In fact, you know, one industry that wasn't hit by COVID, it was the construction industry. I mean, construction just continued by leaps and bounds and, and construction. But what we have now, I think 64% of our housing is single-family housing. What makes it unaffordable for a lot of people to purchase their, their, their home, their first home. So we have, so we need the need for a lot of diverse, an array of housing, whether that be tiny homes, whether that be apartment complexes or huge complexes, and whether that, you know, including condos and duplexes and fourplexes. We need to think in a, a different way in terms of housing. And one of the things the city is doing is like, they're looking at flex zoning. And flex zoning has different housing types with multifamily, single, also duplexes and fourplexes and single-family homes that we're looking at to make, to create that density. It's important, people like, when they're going up, like any apartment buildings throughout the city, there's a lot of pushback. And what happens, because they're afraid it's going to bring down the values and, and traffic, when indeed, when there's density, that brings businesses, it brings more walkable areas. And so it actually could have the opposite effect. So in right now, in southeast, we have four affordable projects going on too that are with the Urban Renewal Authority Plan, our project, which one will can, will have universal housing for people with disabilities and all abilities to access. And the other is Alma Gray off Academy and Verde. And then we have Academy Heights Affordable Project. And we have, oh God, I'm freaking out on that one. But we have
And Yolanda, we do need to wrap up and move on to Regina.
Okay, okay. That's it.
All right, Regina.
Okay, same question?
Yes.
Okay, so, so we know that affordable housing is not an easy fix. As we can see, since we're in this pandemic and everything over the past year, we've saw, we've seen several initiatives pop up for, or, or form, not pop up, just form around this affordable, affordable housing issue. So clearly, it's, it's a huge issue. And, and we need to figure out ways, how, how we can cut costs to make it make sense for everyone. I'm not going to try to use big words and all of that because I need to keep it to the level of the people where they can understand it. Because I believe that's a lot of the issue, what's wrong. Sometimes people try to talk over your head. But I know that funding is, is a major issue. Where are these dollars going to come from? In order for us to be able to provide more affordable housing, we need to see where we can make cuts at or provide different incentives for these people that are actually building and developing where it makes sense for our community. And density is going to play a, a, a major role. It keeps, it keeps costing things down like that. And we need to look at how we do, how, how zoning is done. And we do need more multifamily units. But I believe before you go into a neighborhood, a neighborhood should know exactly what's happening instead of just being imposed upon. So like I said, and I'm going to continue to say it, this is a collaborative work. That's where we make the best decisions together because this is just not going to be an easy fix because there's, there's a huge lack across the city. But there's, there's an even greater lack in District Four. So just engaging community and the initiatives that have formed for public affordable housing because of this. We need to just work together and come up with the best solutions because Regina English just doesn't have an easy fix. Well, Regina, what are you going to do? I don't, I don't have an easy fix. I have to do what everyone else has been doing, working together. So I mean, that's, that's just what it is for me. But I know it's an issue that I'm going to zoom in on, and I have been. So thank you for the question.
Yeah, we're going to take sort of an, one of the themes showing up in the Facebook questions is about road maintenance. So could you address how you would fund road maintenance additionally? Or if we need to do more around road maintenance? And we're going to start with Regina.
So for me, there, there, there's, we have some roads that certainly need more attention than others. And, and I know here, over in my district, I'm just as tired as, you know, hitting potholes as, as the next driver, right? So I'm aware of these road issues that we have, and it's all going to take funding. And I know people don't like tax hikes or different things like that. But we need to be more creative in where we're going to pull these funds from. Because people always want to get things done and they want what they want. But then it's like, where are we going to get the funding from? Because the funding has got to come somewhere. But I think if it's, if it's reasonable and the community is involved from the process, from the beginning to the end, and so they understand clearly with a clear and concise message on what's happening, then we'll have more buy-in. Because we can be creative and, and pull fundings from, we can go after money, like different grants and things like that. And, you know, like the whole 2C program that the mayor had, that, that was good. That helped fix a lot of our roads. But I believe everything is a funding issue. So we need to look at that piece of it and say, hey, we are aware of what we want our roads to look like. And we need to figure out what can we do in the most meaningful way? To, we need to have thoughtful decisions so that we can make a meaningful decision on fixing our roads and where that funding will come from. Because that's the bottom line. It's going to take funding.
Excellent. We'll go on to Yolanda now.
We'll be starting, oh, I think we started 2C too and in fixing our roads and sidewalks and the ADA ramps. So what's happened so far is usually after the winter storm, as right now, that's when the potholes appear, right? And but it's, and we get busy on those because they've eroded our roads so badly. But one of the things I'm really excited about is the transportation bill at the State House. And we haven't, you know, we haven't been paying, we get paid 22 cents for gasoline, and we've been doing that for 20 years or more. And so now we're looking at raising that. We're, we're looking at more funding for transportation. So we had to do the 2C too because there was no funding for that. And that was a way to be able to fix, we were such a backlog in fixing our roads. But I think we're really doing a good job. There's so much construction in every area of the district, of our district, but of the whole city. And, you know, as the Souther said, the good news is that we're fixing the roads. And the bad news is that we're fixing the roads. There's a lot of cones around. And so I think with the extra funding that's coming down from the state for transportation to get our roads up to speed, and I think that's, I, we, we have a lot of work to do. If you put all the miles here in the city, we would, together, we would reach to Italy, Rome. So there's a lot of, of roads. So in new developments, but the problem is, it happens, is that once a development is made, it's, the new roads are only guaranteed for two years. So we have to figure out how we can lengthen that warranty or also to make sure that we don't keep going to new developments and annexing and that we fix the roads that we already have. So it's, it's a continued process, a continued work, and something that I will continue to fight for because that's access. That creates the access to have really good roads and walkable sidewalks.
All right. And we are now going to move into the closing statements portion of today's forum. And so each candidate will have a minute 30 to give their final words for today. And we will start with Yolanda.
Thank you so much for having me. My name is Yolanda Avila, and I hope to gain your vote for District Four. I have shown results in terms of transit, in terms of roads, in terms of bridges, in terms of economic development by the Urban Renewal Authority projects. I want to continue that work. And in closeness, there's stuff in the city that were, it's not our purview. But still, I assisted in bringing a medical clinic to southeast Colorado Springs, the 80916 that never existed before. It's been very helpful now in the time of COVID. I've partnered a lot with the county, being on the Board of Public Health and being able to make sure that we're all getting our vaccines, especially people of color, the equitable vaccine. I just want to continue to do this great work. This is not a stepping stone for me. It's something I am committed to. I committed it four years ago, and I will commit another four years. Please contact me at yolandaforcitycouncil.com, and I hope to gain your vote. Thank you.
So I am Regina English, and there are three things that are important. So I am Regina English, and there are three things that are important, four things that is important for me, a better quality of life for my constituents, opportunities, resource and access. Above all, access is more important than all of, all of, all of them, which ties into a better quality, quality of life. We're in a pivotal moment, especially in our, in our district. We're experiencing tremendous growth. There has been some work done. But I just personally believe in passing baton, the baton, and the moment that we're in is gonna take an objective thinker. It's gonna take a new energy, and, and my body of work proves that I have the stamina and an energy to do this work and to propel us to that next level that District Four is certainly gonna go into. Because we have some great people here, we have some great organizations that have been established and that are, um, continuing the work as a partnership. So we're in this work together. So I'm just here to, to represent, be that strong collaborative, more consistent voice at the table for all people. And I believe we're in a time that, you know, the city actually needs to reflect what the city looks like. And it's been a pretty long time for, um, a, a black woman or a black man for that reason, to have a seat at the table on city council. So I'm here to change the narrative. I'm here to represent and speak for the voices of my community and bring that collaborative voice and not just the voice of Regina. Uh, I wanna be inclusive and not just exclusive to certain populations because I'm certainly for all people. So you can go to my website at reginaenglish.com to learn more about me and to ask more questions. So thank you for your vote in advance.
All right, and a big thank you to both of our District Four candidates for joining us for this forum today. We apologize, of course, for the technical difficulties that we had at the beginning, but we made it and, uh, we survived this half hour together. Um, a reminder to, uh, for anyone who may be joining us through Zoom or on Facebook Live right now. All of these forums are available on all of our streaming platforms for K O A A, and you can also find them on both the Gazette and K O A A dot com.
Yeah, it was wonderful to have you both with us. Um, this is a general reminder for folks that you should have already received your, uh, ballot in the mail, and if not, you need to be in touch with the city clerk's office. You can also find a full listing of ballot drop-off locations on the city clerk's website. Um, if you would like to join us on Monday, we will be visiting with the District Two candidates. Folks competing to represent northeast Colorado Springs. It will also be held at twelve thirty, and we will welcome your participation. Thank you so much.